There's worse insults in the world.
Yes, there certainly are. I'm with you on that one, Jason. Sorry, your email, Jason, on the appropriation of that.
Sorry.
Thank you. I forwarded it under Joel's.
I don't know.
Paul, James, and Mark.
All right. All right, sounds good.
We already got money back? Is this what they're...
It looks like it.
Well, I assume Thomas probably can talk about it, but it looks like it's the finalized. Usually it took more time than that.
Well, usually. Well, sometimes it never came in. We used to have it. You always said, "Mayor, how much do we make?"
Oh, there's no... There never is.
It was always...
Call the City Oakusby Council meeting to order?
Augurite?
Here.
Helenin?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Udis?
Here.
Revara?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion on second to approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2022 regular meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Comments on agenda items only. Come to the podium, please. State your name.
Wrote some stuff down so I wouldn't forget.
Is it on?
I don't think so.
Test. My name is Alan Thompson. My wife and I live in the house directly behind the proposed parking lot that is on the agenda for tonight. I'd like to start by saying I'm not opposed to a new parking lot being put there. What I am opposed to is the exit from that parking lot leading out into the alley. I have safety concerns with cars exiting down a narrow drive and onto a one-lane alley. And those concerns are for the safety of my family, my neighbors, and there's also people that use that alley to travel back and forth to Dollar General, stuff like that with their kids. I also feel there's a risk to my property as well with my cars parking right alongside there. Not sure if any of you are aware, but at the time when the city took the ownership of the building, I spoke with the mayor and I made my intentions clear that I was interested in doing something with the land behind the building, possibly squaring off my property so I would have the opportunity to possibly build a garage, which I didn't have enough room for at the time. So I was kind of surprised when I see in the last agenda that the proposal to take some of what is my property away and to put the exit to the alley. I still think there's a way that we can come up with a solution. And I just think it needs to be fair for everyone, and I just wanted to let my opinion be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And I'm Greg Stein, Oakusby, and I'm here for the same item. And I think there was a misunderstanding at the last meeting that Dominic, the mayor, voted against the parking lot. If I understand right, and we've chatted, he's for the parking lot also. He's against the issue of driving out the north end to the alley, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so we're in, us three at least, are in the same camp. I did go out there. This picture is on my Facebook page, and it's not very big. I could've brought it if we had that TV here and plugged it in there, but...
We're gonna go buy one now.
I measured it to the edge of the gravel and to the pink stake surveyor marker at 105 feet wide on the sidewalk side, or 105 feet deep on the Pavanato side. And so it'd be similar on the Todd's place. And it's 63 feet wide across the sidewalk. And again, what he's talking about, the city's talking about doing a trade for a little bit of his, where his pool either needs to be moved or he needs to trade some land so that the city can get enough space width to do this driveway out to the alley. I found some. I'm gonna do it down here. I'll try to talk loud. So generally, this file folder is proportional to, this is 63 feet wide. If each one of these were a car, there would be 23 feet down the middle. You could put 10 of them down in the 105 feet. You could put 10 of them. I think I didn't scrunch them up enough. 10 feet by 20-foot car would give 20 cars in this lot. I think you could put, somebody could pull off a parallel park. And if there was a big funeral, Diane could park cars down the middle, and they'd be the first to leave when the funeral procession leaves. So I think you could end up with 20, maybe 21 generally, if this does not happen out here into the alley between Florence and Walnut. And so I don't think it needs a median, a center cutout of the sidewalk to get things started. Again, which is, I think his tiny home property will be more valuable if you let him have this property back here instead of doing an exit. I think it's safer. I think you'll end up recouping a little bit of money over 100 years with the value of his property value, especially if he puts in a garage.
What does the city engineers think about that?
Okay. In my opinion, since it's a business district, there should not be an ordinance of a fence setback ordinance. So the 63-foot width should be the width of the ability of cars to park at it, not some sort of fence setback ordinance that throws away valuable property for cars to park at it. And... Well, okay. I agree. Definitely. That's not, there's nothing gonna park down the middle unless it's a funeral. So there's 23 feet. If cars are given 20 feet apiece, and that is a big truck that's 20, that's more than 20 feet wide, long. Generally, this would not be parking, except in a highly densely needed parking lot. And me and Tom were goofing at the bar that he's got, he's selling these new things that stripes football and baseball fields. He says he'll do it. He'll show up there with his fancy, bad-ass parking lot striper and innovative temporary. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Your honor. Do you guys want this?
Any other comments?
I'll take it.
John?
We'll make it public record.
I'll take it, Greg.
Looks like you already gave it.
John Lepatic, I live right around the corner from where this is gonna be built. When Smith owned that building, they had a lot of cars in there, and I moved a lot of cars inside that building. I mean, can't we do something? I'm an engineer and I never will. I'm not gonna, you know. But can't we make something like a parking lot out here where you can hang a parking? You know, that's, that exit out the back, there's enough traffic that goes down there. Well, you got a new grandson now. I mean, kids are gonna be outside. The neighbor's got kids down the street. I got grandkids that come. There's a lot of traffic and a lot of people walk down that alley.
Are you the property to the west?
To the, east. I'm right on the corner. I'm right on the alley right there.
Southeast of the alley.
Yeah.
Northeast of the alley.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah. I mean, it's, I don't like it. You know what I mean? There's enough that goes up and down that alley the way it is, but like I said, it's, I would think, why can't you do, like you do across the street here? You got some angle, come around, angle the other way. I don't know, you know, specifics on all of that kind of stuff, but that's what I got to say about it, so.
Thank you, John.
Your honor. Well, my intention is straight in, parking to the east and west side.
Okay.
Straight in, no angle, straight in.
I think the council will take this under advisement, and we'll kind of put our heads together and see if we can't come up with a solution that's fair for everyone. I need a motion on second to approve bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approved bid for street projects submitted by Advanced Asphalt in the amount of $210,835.
So eight days ago, we had our bid opening. We were pleased. We're always a little nervous when it comes to cost of materials or what things are gonna be, and it was about 2% over what the engineering estimate was. So we're relatively pleased with that. So that's gonna get all of our projects done that we wanted to. If there's any questions on that, I was looking to approve it tonight, actually, because it's been placed on file over a week ago.
Ready to go.
Go.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve bid for street projects submitted from Advanced Asphalt in the amount of $210,835 to be used via motorfield tax.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Discuss plans for, oh, got ahead of myself. Place on file quotes for upgrades at the iron plant and the EZ valves.
So this is actually multiple items here. I placed on everybody's desk here. We started getting them on Friday, and we got the rest of them in, I believe, today. We can talk about the first one first, I guess, which is the iron plant. Some of the questions, I think Tommy had a question of, we get a deal if we do more than one of them at the same time? For those that don't remember, or maybe weren't here, what that is, is our iron plant has two main tanks, and they were on our 10-year plan to get them replaced. One of the tanks, though, is already leaking right now. So we need, one of them has to be fixed. It's up to see if we want to fix both of them. For one tank, the best quote sets we got was $33,268 and $38,395 ones for material and the others for sandblasting and recoating. So one tank together is gonna cost about $72,000. So the good news is they are honoring the quotes they gave us three, four months ago at the same price. The bad news is there is no benefit, there's no cost reduction in getting two of them done. So the question for the council is, do we want to do two of them now, knowing that we're gonna have to get them both done anyways? Or do we want to save costs a little bit and just get the one tank that has to get done now? I could see going either way with it. If we're looking to save costs, I'd be down for just one of them.
What's the best financial, what's best financially for the city?
Well, I mean, getting just one of them done, if we only ever had to do that, would be great, but they are both gonna need to be done. I don't know how much cost and materials are gonna go up in the next couple of years. But since we're spending a lot of money on a lot of things, maybe one's not a bad idea. What's that, Tommy?
We're saying two to three years. What is, one way we want to do the X one is my question, if we had to just pick one.
Well, so again, it was in the long-range plan for the 10-year plan. It wasn't necessarily designed to be done this year or the next year, but when the leak was discovered, everything kind of got moved up on that one, so.
But the other one could be eight to 10 years now?
No, well, it wasn't evaluated like that. It was a long-term plan. So I don't have a close evaluation of what, I mean, they both need it. The resin is, I don't think I have that with me right now. I mean, what was it, what was it, 89? 89 was the last resin change for it, for both of them at the same time.
Okay.
Hey, guys, we need to earmark that ARPA money that we've been given, or else we're gonna lose it. Is this a project we might want to use that money for?
Our second installment's coming soon.
Yeah, we need to, that's gotta be spent in a certain timeframe.
I wasn't aware of that. I'm totally okay with doing both of them.
The American Rescue Plan Act. I think we got 400 and some thousand hours. First installment was, too, what?
September of last year. Our second one, I believe, is supposed to be here in July.
My understanding is, yeah, if you don't spend the first half, you don't get the second half. That's my understanding.
That could well be true, but the question is what you can spend it on, I guess.
There's a lot of towns using it for infrastructure. I know a town put a new water tower and stuff to that nature, so I don't see why it couldn't.
It makes sense to me. Is that something Shug monitors for you, Amy?
Yeah.
You can reach out to her.
Contact DCO with us.
Well, tonight, we can only place on file anyway, since I just got these quotes today.
We'll get an answer to that before the meeting.
How about, how about we place on file tonight, and then we'll find out how we can spend them? If that isn't authorized means, then when we approve, we'll approve them with that spending method next meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
Makes a lot of sense.
So we'll do both of them.
Everybody's under the idea of doing both?
If we can use ARPA, regardless, we're saying both.
So you're gonna place them on file?
Yeah, let me, I was surprised to hear that. I thought we were just gonna do the one, so let me multiply the, sorry, I do the quote right now. Right now, multiply it the right amount.
I'd like to reevaluate this if we can't use the ARPA funds. I think if we can use ARPA funds, I'm all for doing both of them. If we cannot, I think we need to evaluate that, too. What do you, what do you guys think?
Let me ask Pat. If we were to put both of these on file for doing both tanks, and let's say next meeting we decided, you know, we can't spend the money that way, let's just do the one tank. Can we approve it as just one then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I think that's it. Give me one second, sorry. 268. 60 times 2. All right. Because technically two motions then, because they're both two different ones. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to put the first quote on file from Putnam County Painting for the materials in the amount of $66,537.20.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to put the second quote on file from Putnam County Painting that includes the sandblasting and powder coating in the amount of $76,790.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next is discuss plans for future parking lot located at 246...
No EZ valves for you.
I apologize, Mayor. I'm so sorry. We actually had two of the items on the same one, actually, with the EZ valves was the next item. I apologize. So the next item is the EZ valves. We talked about that. This was, we technically appropriated last year for 800,000. That was the idea that we might get the grant. That was going to be our portion of the Columbia Project and the Walnut Project. The Walnut Project itself, which was valves and all piping, was about $800,000. Between Shamlin's and Tass, they were able to come up with an idea that I think is significantly better. Instead of changing out all the piping for it, we can replace all the belt, the bad isolation valves, so we won't ever have that problem again to where if we have a break in that half-mile stretch, it's where we have to shut the city down. And looking at all the options, I presented a whole bunch of different quotes before. Some of the problems was there's line stops, they took longer to get in, some of the valves would take up to six months. So there is an option here to get this done between two different quotes. The best price is Corin Main for all their EZ valves they have. The problem is they do not have 14-inch valves for sale. So going to UECO for the other two 14-inch valves between both quotes, one's at 86,000 and the other's at 45,000. So that's about $125,000, but we'd have all the materials on hand and be able to have this problem wrapped up within about a month.
Jason? Excuse me. Since that, since that 14, 14-inch pipe is an odd-sized pipe, if we had to go and replace the pipe, could we put some reducers in there some way so we wouldn't have to replace the valves?
I'm told that would not work in the case for the 14-inch valve. That's the last heard, because I asked that question, so that would be a lost cost.
That's gonna restrict water flow, too, if you downsize it.
So I asked that question, and I think the word I got from the engineer was it dropped like a quarter PSI, which was hardly nothing. That surprised me, so that really wasn't the problem so much.
I'd speak more in gallons per minute. I mean, what would that affect our, for a fire, would be my concern.
I don't know, but I can get a specific on that if you need me to, PSI. That I don't know. My overall goal was to see if there's a way to get this solution in place before the school year starts and for something that's significantly less than $800,000. So that was the overall goal. But if we can, would you like to place this on file or skip that so I can get the answers on those other things?
I gotta bring it up. So for replacing all the valves in a half-mile, how much is the pipe for that half-mile?
I believe that was, I wanna say it was about $650,000.
Okay. That's a big number. All right. All right. Okay. That was my only question.
Can we get 14-inch pipe?
Well, if we ever did, the word I got is it's such an odd size that if we ever had to replace the pipe, we would not, we would not do 14-inch. We'd go, we would go to 12.
16.
Yeah, but we couldn't go to 12 with a 14-inch pipe?
There were some talks, I'll be honest, I'd have to get a little smarter about it before I present on that. I, we did have some talks about it and stuff, and the last I heard was converting between the 12 and the 14 was not gonna drop much pressure. But anyways, the plan was to put 14-inch valves in anyways.
Jason, what would happen if you put 16-inch valves and then adapted to that? What would be the cost difference on that? Because then, if we ever do in the future, run a 16-inch main out there, now we're not restricting anything, we're not wasting our money on an odd-sized bell.
Terry?
Yeah?
If they ever put a new pipe in, they lay it next, so the valve would just stay in the ground.
So you wouldn't utilize them?
Not the 214. The other ones would be utilized if they're on the power grid. Those would be utilized, but the 214 would just isolate half that section each time.
So they're special purpose just because, okay, I got you. Then never mind.
And these EZ valve ones, they're a lot, so basically, we don't have to pay for a line stop feature to come in to stop. You can actually change it live specifically, which is a unique thing for us, for something that we can't shut down, so it's kind of useful. So the advantage is for about $125,000, we would be, because we've been kind of just dancing that we haven't had this problem come up. About, I think it was about two years ago, within like three months, we had it happen twice, to where we had to shut the city down, and that's a terrible thing to have to happen if it's during the school year. It's one thing when you affect the homes and businesses. It's another thing when you affect all those families as well, because their kids have to come home from school.
Then when you have a fire, it's even worse.
Yeah?
This might be something you could use the ARPA funds for, too, Terry.
I would think so.
So Amy, if you're gonna check with Shug, see if we can use them for these EZ valves.
So the question is, do we want to place them file, or do you want me to look up some of those other questions that you have yet?
No, they're not gonna be utilized if we ever upgrade the system. What's the point?
How about we place both on file? I'll find out the answers to those questions that you have, and then we can also find out if we can use the ARPA funds for it. If they can, and the answers are, hey, this is the route we want to go, then we can approve it next meeting. If not, we can always take a different route. Does that sound good to everybody?
Well, that sounds the intelligent way to go. This way, we won't have to shut, shut down everybody that goes west.
Yeah, and because it took so long to get the grant response back, that's why we've been in this limbo for two years. So, all right, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to place on file the quote from Corin Main for EZ valves in the cost of $45,409.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to place on file the quote from UECO for the 14-inch EZ valves in the amount of $86,000.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Helenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
On the agenda is discuss plans for future parking lot at 246 East Walnut Street in Oakusby. I would suggest that we place this on hold until we can have some further discussion.
Look at other options, yes.
Yeah, the one option, I don't know if everybody saw, because I did ask our engineer about a possible for turnaround option in there, and they did come up with one schematic that was an option. But I think to make that happen, though, we still needed eight more feet of width.
And that's with the angled parking, right, Jason?
That was with the angled parking in the center, and he even made a comment that it would be possible, but yet it would be tight, and that was for 16 spots. The two in the back would be tight. But again, we need to, if I'm correct, right, we still need to be able to purchase eight feet of more width, right?
West side.
Correct. And if I remember right, the gentleman that lived there wanted to buy it from us.
That's probably a possibility. Where's your magic, Jason?
So, I mean, the one I just saw there with Greg doing, that was a new schematic. I haven't seen that yet. I mean, we could always look at that for another option, but my understanding is it's a very narrow area, and we're gonna be limited on our, on our options.
Move on. This is old business, and I know we're gonna have public comments shortly after this. So why don't we, on our old business, put that up for discussion by the council? And the next item on the agenda is public comments. Flooding on Oakwood. This has been an ongoing issue for some time. President of the Townhouse Association has complained. The residents on Oakwood have complained. There was an issue with drainage before the duplexes were built. Building McFederin Park was to take care of the issue. It didn't. Last year, we authorized Shamlin to come up with a plan to resolve the issue. The debate seems to center on who is responsible. Buildings of the duplexes are not in the picture. They're not here anymore. The people who now live there, they're the people that affect it. The city, the city is concerned about setting precedent and resolving an issue between neighbors on drainage. Where does it put the city in a liability position? And how do we resolve it? There has to be a common sense, practical way to get this addressed. You know, these people, and when you have to run two sump pumps to keep the water out of your basement, we got a problem for sump pumps, and it's a, it's a nightmare for everybody. Throw it open to anybody on the council that wants to make a comment. I'd be interested in hearing what Pat's take on it as for the responsibility.
Well, I don't think there's any legal obligation for the city to do anything, Terry. It's, it's an issue that was, in my understanding from reviewing Jim's emails, created by the developers 20, 30 years ago when this property was developed. Nonetheless, you have a problem, the landowners have a problem on their hand, and they're asking the city for help. I don't think it's the city's legal responsibility to have to do anything about it, but that doesn't mean you might not take a different moral approach to it.
Does that set us up for future litigation with precedents?
I don't know about litigation. It certainly sets you up for future requests for these type of problems if they were to come up. I don't think that somebody could use it as a legal precedent, that you would have to do this, but you may still feel a moral obligation to correct that situation, too. I don't know. I can just tell you that legally speaking, I don't see that the city has created this problem from what I know of it, nor does the city have any responsibility to fix it legally, but...
Got a question.
Sure.
The, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an expert in this, and how water drains and the flow of it. But in back of those, uh, townhouse, townhouses, there was a holding pond at, at one time where the water kind of flowed into it and then it flowed out down to the creek. When McFederin was built, it was supposed to take and resolve all the problems, it didn't. So, um, you know, these people that bought these condos that were built, they had no idea what they were, that they were buying something that, uh, that somebody how can I say this properly, erred in judgment in, uh, in draining that, that area? You know, does the city have a, I'm not even gonna go there, who seemed to be pointing the finger at, at everybody. There has to be a, an ethical way that we can resolve this thing, and we're not hanging everybody out to dry.
Well, I think several months ago, we did as a council agree that we would pay for the engineering services to come in and come with a solution. So we, we did, again, we didn't have a responsibility to do that, but we did. And we came up with a solution and I think the, from my, and this is my understanding of, of how I read it, was that when the developers, there was a better way that they should have done something out there. Now, my question is, is the city responsible for ensuring that a developer does it this specific way or just anyway, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm curious, because if it doesn't fall on the city, my concern is, even if this only costs five thousand dollars, which I'll be honest, when you're talking about being able to help residents, five thousand dollars is a very small amount. The concern I have is if we spend five thousand dollars or whatever it's gonna be to fix a drainage issue of which the city's not responsible for, that sets up, because I know there's a lot of other areas in the city, like for example, where I live in Cedar Creek, there is not a field tile there and there is a whole bunch, I got calls all over from people that were upset about flooded backyards and everything like that, and that might be a half million to fix that.
And when I, when I moved in Jason, I think, you know, I spent six thousand dollars to put in a French drain system in my backyard because it was a hole every time it rained.
Yep, and, and we had that issue over there where we had to, uh, go through to make sure people were not illegally hooked up, that was a whole nightmare as well. And people came out of pocket to, to fix those issues, to make sure that they were within legal standards. You know, I'm not opposed to spending five thousand dollars to help half a dozen residents or how many people it affects, but my concern is any, we do, if we do that, I feel like we're setting ourselves up for the next people to come in to say, I got a drainage problem on my property.
There's a lot of that that exists, especially in our subdivision.
Yep, well, it's, it's very flat here, so, I mean, there's drainage issues all over the place, and we, we really experienced that yesterday when we took five inches of rain in just a little over an hour. That's my, that's my concern.
I, I understand.
And I mean, there is some other things, for example, um, I got a call from a couple of the residents that wanted us to come pump out the area there. I called my, my on-call guy and he said it's just not, it's not deep enough. For me to actually use the pumps, we have to do, I'd probably have to dig a hole to get in there. So sure enough, this went back and forth a little bit and I, I still did send him out there to see what he could do, and the good news is he was able to find a low spot on the land that he was able to pump for four hours to help it, and I guess it did help some of the residents, so that's great. But the concern is, I still sent city resources to go there for being paid double time to pump down a field that we're technically not responsible for doing, so that's, that's my concern. I'm, I'm always happy to help somebody, but I don't want to overly use taxpayer money when technically it shouldn't be used for that.
Public comments on the issue. Please come to the podium.
I'll jump in for a second, I'm not.
Just a second Greg.
Okay. I was down there at McFederin Pond today, I was curious how high the level got in the pond and it got to the second tier of, of drainage pipes into the creek. And you most, you probably know, I'm not sure you all know, but it overflowed that, that pipe underneath Clark Street overflowed and there's some repairs to be done there. And so there was a third layer of drainage pipes into the creek that goes down the hill and crosses underneath Clark Street and there's some repairs to do there. And it was, it was the strangest rainfall I think I've ever seen in thirty years, so it's one of those five hundred year floods that's happening more and more.
You could already answer some of my questions, but that's okay. I'm gonna read what I had prepared. My name is Mary.
Your name for the record?
Mary Ann Stefanelle, I have lived at two oh nine Oakwood Avenue B since November of two thousand and five. I'm the spokesperson for this representative group of Oakwood Avenue residents, some who have had recurring flooding issues and some new flood victims after yesterday's storm. Some people in the back row are here. We believe that drainage attenuation on public property easement will substantially improve this ongoing flooding issue. We residents of Oakwood Avenue and Heritage Gardens, all part of the Heritage Field subdivision, would like to be placed on the agenda for the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting to discuss this recurring issue. It is our hope that before the meeting, Mayor Rivera, the Public Works Director, and our Commissioner Curran, who serves as the Commissioner of Electric Streets, Water and Sewer, will meet with us at the problematic area, walk through it with us, and find a remedy for the problem using public easements. We feel by working to resolve this issue, which was certainly magnified by yesterday's storms, it will be beneficial for all parties. Why do you ask? Because it will maintain property values, not just for us, but the people surrounding us, everybody who lives in that Heritage, um, Heritage Field subdivision. And along with maintaining the property values, it will maintain a stable tax base as well. Our property values go down, guess what? So do the people across the street who don't have flooding problems. What does that do to your tax base? So, and it will also maintain public health by minimizing unnecessary standing bodies of water, a breeding ground for mosquitoes and other unwanted disease-carrying pests. So we look forward to having an opportunity to be on the agenda on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
I had to correct a couple things, my name is Scott Stavrekas, I live at two fourteen, or two seventeen.
He's got her last name.
Scott, St, S-T-A-V is inviter, R-A-K-A-S. Correct a few things. The gentleman was out pumping water six to eight hours after the storm. At the height of the storm, the water was deflecting off the rise in the easement, it was going down easement. It hits a hill in the easement, direct to our houses, we were a foot over our basements, up against the house. It deflected off our houses, ran down the back and flooded other condos that easement, being elevated, deflects water to us. That water was almost waist-deep at night. That's a huge issue, and there's never been anything neighbor against neighbor, every neighbor there wants this done. That is the problem.
Scott, I've got a question for you, that, that comes down just south of you and it flows in that way?
You have fourteen quads and two duplexes that drain into the easement. It goes downhill, hits the elevation of easement right behind my house, deflects back to our basements, runs in the basement. I have three sump pumps, Pat has four at times going, I've got seventy-five horsepower sump pumps going. But once it's a, a foot over your basement, running down and coming back up the floor, you can't stop it guys, and it's coming from the city easement.
The term. It's not, it, it, there's, there's, it, it, there's no way that it can drain to the north.
Right.
Because of?
Of a hill in the easement. There's a swale in the easement.
Can I ask what you mean by elevated easement, like it's elevated actually?
Yes, the easement is, as you go north, easement heads downhill until it hits the back between Pat's house and my house, there's a hill there. It will not get over that hill, and it hits that, and it comes right back to our houses and floods that field. If you go over that hill, it's downhill all the way to the pond in the center. There is a drain that was put in, they did McFederin, not a hundred feet from that hill.
Is that a hundred feet, north or south? So if it'd be, if there was something, and, and I'll talk to the engineer.
If at the easement, we could cut a hole through the hill to let the water out, it will continue all the way down to McFederin and there's no problem. It's at the easement. It hits that hill, comes right back, floods that pond, that pond, it went, it was this high over Pat's step on her deck.
It needs a bypass.
Sorry?
About the bypass?
A bypass.
So direct the water, the flow of water?
The water is flowing fine until it hits the hill.
Right.
And then it bypassed, then it's deflected back to us.
Yeah, so there's definitely a way out.
It has to have a way out. If there was a way out through the swale, it will just continue right down to McFederin. That's our problem.
So do you think a drainage tile in there would fix that problem?
A drainage tile, a dip, I mean, you, you gotta cut this far down.
Okay.
Jim, was that the, was that the recommendation that you had when, I think when I looked at something a few months ago on that? I remember you said there was a recommendation solution, was that it?
No.
Okay.
Jim, how big of a pipe would we need? To either directional board to, to relieve that on the south side of where that hill is?
You'd have to get an easement from Heritage Field Association, you'd have to get an easement from Heritage Field Association to get on the correct side so that it can sort of, kind of, the best part later.
Gus, we've got.
But then, then at some point, you'd also have to, uh, re-rotate most facilities, get, facilities under whatever pipe you're building.
Okay. So you're saying the homes built in two thousand and seven actually changed?
They blocked the drains, so we relocated the home at, uh, twenty thirteen.
I have a question, how are they approved for building, because I know, I just put my paperwork behind, and it's the, they have the concept plan, I have design for it and I look through your city ordinances, so some of your ordinances were telling me it was back to eighteen fifty-seven, so I know already that some information where it's the toilets, so I don't find that there's a, that the city, you know, who were there, but somebody from the city should write me that it's a problem because we already have things in place for approval of such submissions. And I'm gonna, yeah, I don't have all those numbers and I can't look them up.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sure, and I've always refrained from doing this, uh, that the people that made the decision were making it what they believe in the best interest of the city. And I think what you're asking is that, uh, some residents meet with some of the city officials and our engineer to see if we can't realistically come up with some kind of a solution to correct it. We know we got a problem, we've just got to figure out a way how to resolve the damn thing.
I have pictures of that pond that used to be there before McFederin Pond came into existence somewhere.
Well, you find them and I'll use them.
He wants to be at the meeting now.
Has there been any study about natural springs and the water table above a rock outcropping that start, that's part of the trouble? That should, you know, old wells should have that in the, in the, in the back sheets when they drilled wells of the aquifers and the rock they have drilled through to get a well.
That's out of my area expertise, uh, so I'd have to have somebody come in and, and, uh, guide me through it.
That's not part of what you looked at?
No, the only, the only home that had a well anywhere near that area was closer to where the pond is at now. That was where the farmstead was at. So there could be no wells, there could only have been a single family well.
Let, let us, let us, uh, make contact whoever I'm supposed to, and we'll try to set something up between, uh, myself and Jason and our engineer and let's look at a way we can, uh, resolve it.
You're good, and I know that, um, somebody from the Heritage, uh, want to, wants to, will be, will be with us as well.
They, they want a resolution as well.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure that they do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Who's all that is wrong?
Are both the Heritage having, are they having problems?
Their problems is their back of their property does not drain properly.
What do you have, swamp people, mosquitoes, they're afraid of the mosquitoes. Those people that feed a gerbera, so how about the homes that are further north? I mean, those homes have backup problems, you know, some of them.
No.
They get flooded in here, yes, two thirteen, yes.
Are, are they, are they north or south of that?
There, there's sump pumps always running, but this was the first time they got, you know, full of water.
Okay. Well, let's try to move forward on this and I, if I can get your telephone number before you leave here, well, uh, you're the person I need to contact. Uh, Commissioner reports. Tell us.
Alright, so we have the Fun Fest numbers out this year. Overall profit was twenty-one thousand six ninety-four and nine cents. Just doing a little look through of what's going on, that kind of stuff. Expenses were definitely up this year compared to last year, um, and donations were dramatically lower this year than they were last year as well. So that would be my two major reasons the number is lower than twenty twenty-one. That's all I really have for that.
I have nothing, I have nothing there.
Kelly?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Uh, as you can see by the amount of stuff we placed on file tonight, a lot of things are finally starting to move with some of these infrastructure items that we weighed on for a while. Uh, there's still more to come, we had a great meeting on Friday, was our kickoff meeting with IDOT about the Safe Route to School program. I don't have any good solid dates of when things are gonna get activated or, or go to letting or anything like that yet, but things are moving with that. Um, obviously the big thing that happened yesterday is, uh, I think it's probably the Um obviously, the big thing that happened yesterday is uh, I think it's probably the most rainfall that that we've had in a while. I don't know if it's five-hundred-year storm or anything like that, but uh it is probably the most amount of rainfall I've ever seen in 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 just over an hour. Uh we got just over five inches, and that caused quite a bit of things. Uh so as calls were coming in, uh I did contact our people out, and all of our on-call people were out doing stuff already. There's already a big list, uh other than just the the three residents that contacted me. For example, the Hunter Block of Hayden had a had a pretty good-sized sinkhole I had to get fixed. Manholes on, three manholes on Field Avenue blew off, actually, because it was just so much there. I know that there was a lot of concerns um about some of the areas that were near Clark Street. I will point out that one of the things we did is we put in the grant for the ARPA funds through the county to see if we can get the uh storm separation job at least partially fixed on uh Clark. Clark Avenue is the largest section of the city that is still has a combined sewer. So when you have a massive amount, usually it's an EPA problem, because we don't want to be throwing things over the river, but when you have so much water in this case, and and it's, and we have to jump the 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 diversion structure to send it to the river, it was so much, it's even backing that up. And that's why people were having problems that weren't even on Clark Street. Um so there is a plan in the future for that, once we get that fixed. Um I mean, people running around, I appreciate the calls, but the other thing I want to point things out, and I think uh our clerk's going to be able to make sure it's more clear probably on the city's face, uh web book, sorry, the city's webpage. If people have a problem, the first place to contact is the police non-emergency number. What that does is if it's after hours, it gets a hold of dispatch. I am, whether it's the mayor, myself, or any other commissioner, I'm sure they're more than happy to get the resources. It makes me feel good if I can help with somebody like that, but if you want your 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 item resolved the fastest, the best thing you can do is to call that number, because that is what will get help out dispatched to you. By the time I started calling uh our people, they already had a list about a dozen items, and the three I gave them were already at the bottom of the list, so make sure you call them that number, and then that will get you help the fastest you can get it, and that's all I have.
I've got a few things, uh Republic Service, uh they're going to take a a bit extra this week due to the flooding, but they will not take a big excessive amount, I got parentheses like the entire basement content. Uh we'll work on it, we'll get it done. The fourth was a holiday, we had a, and Jason said on-call personnel. We got numbers, we'll try to get them out so people know who to call, so we can respond. Uh the city is looking at sites for charging stations as well as grants. Uh it was an issue that I discovered a little bit ago that AT&T, under Rauner's, uh when Rauner was governor, uh there was a bill passed to do away with copper lines, uh that's basically your home telephone lines. Uh that's been put on hold for right now. Uh I know especially our older residents, uh everybody has a, still has a landline. The other good news is uh IBCC is um looking to build a new uh AGX center out there. Got a meeting uh this week to start the process. Uh so uh we're trying to get that, that that new building is a three hundred and fifty thou- three hundred? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, so it'll be a pretty good-sized building. And I'd, lastly, I'd like to thank everyone for their co- cooperation and conduct tonight. Uh it was great, um we've got some issues, we're looking to try to resolve them, and uh I really thank everybody for conducting themselves in such a business-like manner. With that, I'll um entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Callanin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Vara.
Aye.